Matlin, can we please start with a roll call?
Absolutely. President Abbas.
Present.
Vice President Martin.
Here.
Alder Carter.
Present.
Alder Bennett. Alder Harrington McKinney.
Present.
Alder Heck.
Here.
Alder Lemmer.
Here.
And Alder Wiheli.
Here.
All right, we have quorum.
Thank you very much. Can we have an announcement from the IT?
Yep, and I just resent Alder Bennett's invite as well.
She's here.
She's arrived.
Oh, awesome. Perfect, okay. Ready. Okay, welcome to our virtual meeting. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. Members of the committee, if you're able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you're able, please activate your video when you're speaking. In this meeting, panelists have the ability to mute and unmute themselves. Panelists also have the ability to add pronouns after their names if they choose. Please do not alter the current naming convention, simply add text after your name. Please use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. Staff, please use the raise hand feature when you're asked a question. The chair will do their best, calling committee members in the order in which hands are raised. Luring your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak, the name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You remain muted until called upon. Staff will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the committee, please send it to the email listed on today's agenda. President Abbas, floor is yours.
Thank you, Stefan. I appreciate that. Can we start with the motion on approval of the minutes, please?
So move approval of the minutes.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, it's moved and seconded. Thank you very much. Any discussion on the minutes? Do not see any hand raised. I will consider as unanimous approval. Public comments. Matlin, do we have this time anybody registered for the public comment? I can see your item number four.
Yep, we have one registrant for agenda item number four, and that's it at this point in time.
Perfect, thank you very much. Moving forward to disclosures and recusal. Anybody wish to disclose or recuse themselves from any agenda item? I do not see any hand raised. I will move forward. Update item is agenda item number two, file number six, seven, six, five, three. A quick update on council redistricting communications. Matlin?
Yep, I'll just keep this update short and sweet. Obviously, we're going through another redistricting process at this point in time. What's happened in the past, as you may have seen from looking at file six, seven, six, five, three, when they redistricted back in 2011, 2012, basically after redistricting was done, they sent out postcards to all the new constituents that were now within that district, basically as an introduction, like, "I'm your new alder, here's how to reach out to me." So once redistricting is finished, the council office is more than happy to help assist with alders in, if they so choose, getting those postcards out the door. Beyond that, we are also happy to help assist with certain other communications, whether you want to post something in your alder blog updates or other social media outreach. We're happy to help out and offer some draft-like language for you, but that's going to be kind of incumbent on the alders to be doing by themselves. The council office is mostly going to be assisting with postcards at this point in time. I've been working with Betsy in finance to figure out how much money we'll have to spend, but the goal is hopefully not to use any of the money you have in your respective alder mail accounts to help facilitate this. We're hoping to find money elsewhere in the council budget.
Thank you very much, Matlin. Any question for the Matlin? Aldo Lemmer.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing the postcard sample. I really like it. I'm wondering if we're able to get translations on the postcard, too, like Spanish or Mon.
That's certainly something that we can look into and probably help facilitate. Yeah, I don't see why not.
All right, cool. Thank you.
Thank you, Aldo Lemmer. Aldo Wiheli.
I thought it was a mistake, sorry.
All right. Aldo Foster?
Thank you. I think that sounds like a good plan. Just wondering if somebody could also connect with perhaps the planning staff that's been leading the process, and I'm assuming we'll have such a thing, but just making sure we have kind of at the end of the day, you know, some kind of informational FAQ kind of document that's available on the web, and maybe we can also point folks to in those postcards to say if you have, you know, you want to learn more about the process or whatever, go here. Just if somebody could maybe check in with staff and make sure we have some kind of summary informational page at the end of the day. That would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Right now, we have just a general link on the council website to the redistricting website, but I'll make sure to coordinate with them that everything's being updated accordingly. That being said, have also, you know, reached out to IT to let them know that this is in the process and basically going to continue to communicate with them to know, you know, when the Find My Alder link is updated and when you get new maps on your respective homepages as well.
Go ahead, Aldo Foster.
Thank you. Yeah, just thought of one other thing, and again, maybe this is all being thought about and taken care of by planning staff or others, but I was just thinking that in terms of those other systems where we have, you know, like alcohol licenses and they list which district it is or which alder, the project map on the like engineering page that, you know, you can click and say, here are the district fifteen projects, just, I guess, checking with appropriate staff and making sure that those kinds of people are thinking ahead for that kind of stuff, and we have a plan to implement those kind of backend changes as well, so we have it be as seamless as possible.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. And one thing I will, oh, Aldo Bennett, go ahead.
Um, question, well, I don't know if you can answer this, Madeline. Actually, maybe this is something I should raise at redistricting committee, but I, from like the last update that we received in CCC, that maybe we could extend, like, when redistricting actually, or like, when it changes, like if we could extend it to like December to allow for like a more transitionary period. I was just bringing that up again as something that maybe we should pursue, but I realized like, now maybe I should bring that up during redistricting committee meeting, not now.
Yep, Aldo Bennett, that's, I thought that's a good point. That's something redistricting committee, when they will present the ordinance, the council can decide to adopt on January first, so that give a time. Aldo Foster, that could be decided later. So regarding this communication, do you have any question about communication strategy or advice?
Um, no, no.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate that. Aldo Carter? You're muted.
Is Attorney Haas available?
Attorney Haas is here.
Attorney Haas, can you reiterate when this takes effect in case alders find themselves in different districts, et cetera?
Sure, and there is a memo in Legisar where we reviewed this. For purposes of elections, the, of course, there are no city elections next year. There has been some discussion about having a delayed effective date, as Alder Bennett alluded to. Under the statute, the ordinance has to go into effect by January first of next year. So there's not any problem if the council wants to delay the effective date, we would just write that into the ordinance to give all of the alders and the residents and constituents some adjustment period, you know, have some time to be able to adjust the information on the city's website and so forth. But whenever it becomes effective, each alder will continue to serve out their term representing the district number that they were elected to, and that will be the case regardless of whether the alder remains in the district that they were elected from. So each district is going to change. You know, on its own, there'll be new, there'll be some voters, residents moved out of the district, each district, and some moved into each district, except for maybe the more populous ones, which are probably only going to shrink and maybe not add new territory. But if an alder ends up outside of their district, they continue to represent the district number that they were elected from and the residents who are in the newly constructed district. And as I pointed out in my memo, there's certainly no legal prohibition on alders assisting residents from outside their district around the city, but as far as the district that you are seen as representing, it will be the district of the same number as it is constituted after the redistricting ordinance takes effect.
And does the city, does the city have elections next year or in 2023?
Right, just in 2023 unless there's a special election, but we do need to have the wards in place for the county elections.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Aldo Carter. Any further discussion? I will also quickly suggest, as the council office is working on the communication strategy, if you guys have any suggestion, commands, please feel free to reach out to the office. With that, we will move forward to a brief presentation, agenda item number three, legislative file number six, seven, three, eight, two, on Robert Rules. Attorney Haas?
Thank you, President Abbas. Would you like to me to share my screen with the PowerPoint? Okay. Are you able to see that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, I will try to zip through this relatively quickly, but I was asked to sort of do a review or a refresher on Robert's Rules. I realize all of the alders have been through most of this presentation. At the time they took office, it's not a bad idea to have a refresher, and especially for new alders, you know, we often find that once they've been through a number of meetings, sort of, it's helpful to go back and sort of recap some of the basic rules on Robert's, in Robert's Rules. Okay, so just quickly on Robert's Rules, we now have a twelfth edition, which is 650 pages approximately, started out as if, basically as a pamphlet, a small number of pages in the 1870s. We have some tools on our website, the City Attorney's Office website. I included a Robert's Rules cheat sheet in the materials in Legisar. We also have what we refer to as May's Manual, which my predecessor attorney May put together to assist, like kind of condense Robert's Rules and assist the council. Also, it's important to note that chapter two of our ordinances refers to Robert's Rules and follows Robert's Rules, except there are some changes, some ways that the ordinances actually alter the rules that are in Robert's Rules. So then, in those cases, we follow chapter two. Just background, everybody always asks, who was Robert? Well, there was a General Henry Robert, actually was a graduate of West Point, served as a military engineer on the side of the north in the Civil War. There's an interesting Wisconsin angle in that he was stationed in Milwaukee working on lighthouses in the harbors in Milwaukee as an engineer when he actually published, unofficially published, the first edition of Robert's Rules, and then it was officially published in 1876. We are in the twelfth edition, which is the first edition that did not have a descendant of the Robert family, who was actually an editor. The last descendant actually passed away during the writing of the twelfth edition. So generally, the purpose of Robert's Rules is to protect the rights of the majority while also protecting the rights of the minority to participate and debate and to help meetings run efficiently. That was the whole purpose of what General Robert tried to do in condensing a bunch of various parliamentary procedures that existed at the time. We have some overlap with the open meetings law, especially as it relates to the notice for meetings, so we have to obviously have stricter rules for notices for our public meetings. Meetings, agendas have to be posted 24 hours in advance, except in the case of an emergency where that can be two hours. And the agendas have to provide clear notice to the public of agenda items that are going to be considered. As I mentioned, chapter two is the council's standing rules that in some cases modify Robert's Rules, and unless they're modified, we follow Robert's Rules. So I just listed some of the ordinance sections here you can refer to, which outline the regular order of business in section 2.04, and then some procedural rules in section 2.05 and in other ordinance sections. Generally speaking, as you know, we cannot act on an item at the same meeting it is introduced unless the rules are suspended with some exceptions. We have what we call a rule of 11 in ordinance 2.18, which means that the majority of the entire council must generally vote in favor of a proposal for it to pass. In some cases, you can have a majority of a quorum. Our quorum is set at 14. That's also different from what Robert's Rules would indicate. So, and so our rule is to pass a measure, you have to have a majority vote of all members of the council, regardless of how many members are actually in attendance. We also have some rules for supermajority votes specifically related to the budget. After the budget is adopted, when we have a budget amendment, you'll see on the agenda item, that's a 15-vote item because it requires three-fourths of the entire council to amend the budget. There are rules for reconsidering a measure, which if you're inclined to do that, it's probably best to give our office a call. It can only be done at the same meeting, in which case you probably cannot call our office, or at the next meeting by a person who voted in the majority or on the prevailing side, or by somebody who had an excused absence from the meeting. We have time limits on speaking, both for the public and for alders. For alders, the rule on debating is you are not allowed to speak more than twice on any question or more than 10 minutes at any time, unless you have either unanimous consent or two-thirds vote of the council. Sometimes we suspend the rules, that also takes a two-thirds vote. Sometimes that is done simply to take things out of order, or again, to operate by unanimous consent. Of course, with the council, we have a consent agenda that's designed to help speed up adoption of items that are thought to be non-controversial or routine. So the obligations of the chair in the case of the council, of course, that's typically the mayor or the council president. Their primary, they have some primary duties to recognize members, direct debate, rule on questions about votes or procedures that can be subject to an appeal of the council and vote of the council. And then also, the mayor can only vote in the case of a 10-10 tie, and that's under state statute, only to break a tie. I always advise people, Robert's Rules for most meetings, most public meetings, they're pretty simple. You have, you know, 650 pages of Robert's Rules you can read through, but it doesn't really take much to know how to get through a meeting typically. And the basic rule is, we operate by motion. On the council floor, we have a motion on the floor, and then we go to staff presentations and debate. You don't have to worry about any specific magic words when you want to make a motion. You can say, "I move this proposal, I move to adopt, move referral," any type of shorthand like that is okay. As you know, we have a recommended motion usually appears on the agenda to help both the alders and the public, and then we have these animals that we call substitutes and alternates, which I won't go into in detail, except to remind you that a substitute is something that the primary sponsor is changing the original proposal by a substitute. And whether or not that was passed by any referral committee, that can be introduced by the primary author or sponsor. An alternate is a different motion on the same topic that is proposed by somebody other than the primary sponsor. Robert's Rules has different classes of motion, which I won't go into in detail, except of course, we have the main motion, and then we have what's called subsidiary motions, which are motions to amend or refer. We have things called incidental and privileged motions, which are usually somebody just either trying to suspend the rules or raising a point of order, basically asking a question of the chair, a question on the proposal or a procedural question. We have privileged motions, things like recessing or adjourning or asking for some type of privilege, personal privilege. We have a list of the most common motions here you can read through. Let me know if you have any questions. Just as you know, when we adjourn, we don't debate adjourning. You can make a motion to adjourn at any time, and it's not debatable. Of course, motions to adopt, motions to amend. We often refer to the rule that you can usually only have two levels of amendment. If somebody wants to make a third amendment, we dispose of the first two before we get to the third, and that's again just a way of keeping order. Interestingly, we have a rule in the ordinances that friendly amendments are accepted if they are not objected to by the council. I have to confess, when I first started here, I thought that the mayor was being over the cautious and not following Robert's Rules, because typically friendly amendments only require the consent of the person who made the original motion and the person who made the second. And this is an example of where we are not following Robert's Rules. If there's an objection by anybody on the council, then the amendment is not considered friendly, and it has to be voted on separately. If it's considered friendly, you can ask for it to be considered as a friendly amendment, and then it just becomes incorporated into the main motion without any separate vote. There are some things that can be done without a vote. If you want to ask for a roll call vote, you can, that requires, you know, no, no, there is no debate. This is granted when asked. You can ask for separating the question if you think that there are too many topics in a specific ordinance. You can ask for the motion to be separated. Probably familiar with putting items on the table or taking off from the table. If something is laid on the table to a specific date, then it ends up on the agenda without any additional item being, any additional motion required to take it up. If it's laid on the table indefinitely, it requires a motion to bring it back off the table to be able to act on. We have this motion called placing on file. That's essentially a way to indefinitely table a motion without voting it down. And if you place something in file without prejudice, it allows that motion to potentially come back within 60 days. Without, if you place it on file and you do not say without prejudice, then an item cannot come back for consideration for more than 60, or until 60 days have passed. As I mentioned, you can make a request for a point of information or a point of order if you have procedural questions, point of privilege if you want to ask the chair to, you know, to step out of the meeting for five minutes or any kind of personal point of privilege. The previous question is kind of oddly neat, but that is just a way to end debate. And so, a lot of people say, "I'm going to call the question," or "I call the question." That does require a second. You cannot debate it because you don't want to debate whether or not to have further debate. It's just voted on and requires two-thirds vote. Often, as you know, if there's only one or two people left in the queue, the mayor will just point that out, and often the courtesy is extended just to allow them to finish up. Recess, you can make a motion to recess in the middle of any other debate, or in the middle of any other motion. Reconsidering, we already covered, I believe. Referral is, in Robert's Rules, it's called committing a matter. That's just simply referring the matter to a committee or to a later meeting of the council. Suspending the rules also requires a two-thirds majority. When that is on the consent agenda, as suspending the rules, it's just adopted as part of the consent agenda. When an item is pulled off the consent agenda, then we typically need, well, sometimes it will be, it will be covered in the kind of the blanket suspension of the rule, but when it's pulled off the agenda, we typically need to first vote on suspending the rules. Typically, that is if you want to adopt something on the same evening it's introduced, you would have that motion on whether or not to suspend the rules to allow that vote to take place, and then you have a separate vote on the actual item. Unanimous consent is a good way to keep the meetings moving along. If there's no objection, the chair will just ask if there's any objection to allowing the speaker to go over time or something, something like that. I'm going to just quickly show you this chart. This is the kind of the precedence of motions. So a motion to adjourn takes precedence over any other motion. Then a motion to recess or question of privilege, laying it on the table and so forth, until you get down to where you start out with the main motion. That's the basic motion. That's where we're debating. All of these other things can be motions made that apply to the main motion. So that's where we come up with that table of precedence that is also outlined on that cheat sheet that's cheat sheet that's attached to Legislaw. It's something I keep handy because it has the rules for what requires a second, if it's debatable, and what, what vote is required. So, it can be a handy tool. Just a note here, we didn't include incidental, incidental motions in those lists because they take precedence over everything else. So, point of order, suspending the rules, things like that. Just a couple notes I wanted to raise on decorum of meetings. And so, I will, I will just say, as I guess a point of personal privilege or liberty, I've been involved in meetings of governmental bodies for thirty years now. And, and this is based on my experience and study of Robert's Rules, as well as, we have some specific language in the rules relating to decorum of, of meetings. The chair is responsible for maintaining order. We have an ordinance that says the, the council vice president is a sergeant-at-arms and can assist the chair in, in maintaining order. Robert's Rules even says a sergeant-at-arms can escort somebody out of a meeting if they are not following the chair's directions and they're being disruptive to the meeting. We obviously don't want to get to that point. But a couple rules I, or guidelines I suggested here, that the debate requires focusing on the issue and proposal, not personalities and not motivations. When I speak to students about Robert's Rules, I try to have them envision the idea that you are presenting is floating in the air, and you are debating that idea. You are directing your arguments at that idea, not directing them at your colleagues. And the ultimate goal of the entire body is to come up with the best decision for the public. And also, Robert's Rules say that we direct our remarks to the chair of the meeting, not members of the body. You can ask the chair, you can say, "I, I have a question I'm asking the sponsor to address." The sponsor is not required to answer, as the mayor has pointed out, but you can raise that as a question. A couple of quotes here, just so you know, this is not coming from me, but it's, it's coming from, from General Robert. This is one of the quotes here. "Debate must be confined to the merits of the pending question. Speakers must address their remarks to the chair, maintain a courteous tone, avoid injecting a personal note into debate. To this end, they must never attack or make any allusion to the motives of members." I want to read this next one and then just have another brief comment on it. "When a question is pending, a member can condemn the nature or likely consequences of the proposed measure in strong terms, but must avoid personalities, and under no circumstances can they attack or question the motives of another member. The measure, not the member, is a subject of debate." We also have an ordinance, two point one three, or I'm not sure if that's, there is, yeah, the ordinance says a member shall confine himself or herself to the question under consideration. So, the two points I wanted to make here are that it often feels good to us, feels natural, and we have strong feelings about questioning other people's motivations. It's a natural tendency, something we feel confident about and we want to do. If you focus on the long term, questioning, questioning the motivations, A is not what is being passed. You are acting on the city's business, the public's business, what is in writing. The person's motives proposing it are not in writing, are not what is going to be the ordinance, are not what is going to be the law. And it's questioning another's motives, motivations, only serves to, in many cases, create hard feelings and distract from the debate. And, and so, I, you know, I have seen this, as I said, through decades of observing and participating in meetings. And, you know, this body is, is not an exception. So I would just encourage the council to take that under advisement. You can be as harsh as you want in challenging, in questioning, in criticizing the outcomes, the, the likely consequences of a question before you. But you don't add anything by questioning somebody's motivations. You don't necessarily know what their motivations are, and their motivations are irrelevant to what you are voting on. So, I just wanted to bring that up because the, that, that has come up in, in some past meetings, and I wanted you to have a little bit of flavor about what's, what Robert's Rules says about that. We have a process for openly debating items, whether or not there's been discussion prior to items being on the agenda. When an item is introduced and then it ends up in committee, that's all the process that is required under law to have transparency. Everybody has a chance to debate the motion in a meeting, whether or not they had a chance to have input into the drafting. Every member of the body has a chance to debate and discuss in committee as well as on the council floor. So I think that's all I'll say on that point unless we have other questions. As I mentioned, we have resources on our website. I encourage you to print out that cheat sheet and just keep it handy in case you need to refer to it in meetings. And we're happy to answer questions, contact me. If I'm not available, feel free to contact Patricia Lawton. With that, I'll stop and see if there's any questions.
Thank you, Attorney Haas, Aldo Vehley.
Thank you, Attorney Haas, for the presentation. Going back to how many people, how many minutes you have to speak? You indicated that twice in a whole meeting or ten minutes maximum? Can you explain?
Right, it's actually twice on any one agenda item.
So, it's based on agenda, not the whole?
On, on one agenda, right, on one agenda item, and also ten minutes at any one time, which, you know, ten minutes, it's a long time. You will notice if somebody is going on for ten minutes. And of course, it does allow to exceed those time limits with a vote of two-thirds of the members, or by unanimous consent.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Aldo Vehley. Aldo Carter?
Thank you. I just want to extend my gratitude to Attorney Haas for, and the, and President Abbas for having this refresher on Robert's Rules. You know, no matter how long we are in an organization or the council, and we know Robert's Rules, at some point, it fades away, and we don't know Robert's Rules. So I appreciate this refresher. Thank you.
Thank you. Aldo Foster?
Thank you, yeah, I think it's very helpful. Just on that question from Aldo Vehley, I wanted to clarify, Attorney Haas, I, I believe the limit is on, I think the language says, not speak more than twice on any question or motion. So, if a, if an agenda item, if somebody moves a substitute or an amendment, you can still, you can kind of chime in on every different motion, right?
That, that's a good point, Aldo Foster. I, I will pass along one other piece of wisdom I heard once about, you know, and this is not a reflection on the quality of any debate. It's only to say, obviously, everybody gets one vote, and sometimes, I have been in meetings, and I'm not saying this happens on the council, I've been in other meetings where you get the impression that some, some participants believe that the more they talk, it's almost like they feel like they will get an additional vote. And at some point, everybody's made up your mind, all of you are very intelligent and dedicated and, and attentive, and so, that's just, you know, I guess, just a, something to keep in mind, that at some point, debate becomes non-productive, everybody's made up their mind, and it's time to, to vote.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? I don't see any hand raised. I just want to say, I also would like to acknowledge Vice President Martin. The idea was generated from her, so want to pass that credit to her as well. With that, we will move forward to new business item, agenda item number four, legislative file number six seven zero eight two, amending section of three three five five of Madison Internal Ordinance to remove the option for an alder to serve as an officer of the Transportation Policy and Planning Board. We have one registrant, Dr. Mara Aish from Ponotia, Wisconsin. Dr. Mara?
Thank you very much. I just wanted, I did send you all an email regarding my concerns about this, and I, I think we need to be very careful about placing alders in positions of management and having a false or positive sense of power to navigate the discussion and movement of a city change of any kind. So, that was my, my two cents worth on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Could we please have a motion?
I move, what is it, a recommendation to approve.
And I believe your recommendation approved for version one or version two?
Oh, correct. I guess that would be version two.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Is there any second?
Second.
Thank you very much. It moved in second. Version two is alternative. Attorney Haas, could you please give a little update on that version? And Attorney Haas, are you here? Perhaps, here we go.
I apologize, I was talking to myself. So, this is Aldo Foster's alternate, which would require, require boards, commissions, and committees to, to elect chairs on an annual basis, no later than June thirtieth of this year. The current language is a little bit vague. It said just following the election of alders, at least every two years. And so, you could have a, a committee that didn't get to it in August, and they would technically be complying with the ordinance. It also allows alders to serve as a chair or vice chair. And then, let's see. Also, if you, further down in subsection seventy, it required, it provides for a process for a, a committee to have agenda items put on, on a future agenda. So there were, each board, commission, and committee would be required to have an, an item on their agenda, allowing members to identify future agenda items. And there could be discussion at that time, which would be limited, limited simply to whether or not it should appear on the next, on the next agenda item. And then the committee would vote on whether or not it would be placed on the agenda. And this would remove the current prohibition on any alder serving as a chair or a vice chair of any BCC.
Thank you, Attorney Haas, for the explanation. Any question for Attorney Haas? Aldo McKinney? Do you have a question?
It's not a question. I just want to be notified when there is discussion on it.
Okay.
So I don't have a question. Thank you.
All right. Any question before we go on a discussion? I do not see any hand raised. Aldo McKinney, please go ahead.
Okay. I will not be supporting the amendment, amendment number two, because it is a, a process question. I, I really, I, I enjoy the, the detail of the process and how we conduct the business. But my, my, there was a, a deep discussion at the Transportation Policy Planning Board last evening related to this. And initially, and I'm going to go into some history because it's, it's important, initially, the reason that I brought this forward was because I, myself, was elected twice as a vice chair and was specifically told by staff and the mayor's office that I couldn't, not serve in that position because no alder could serve as chair or vice chair of any board, commission, or committee. And so, I acquiesced to that. And then, I discovered that there was an exception, one exception, among the hundred and two boards, hundred and two, hundred-plus boards, committees, and commissions, that there was an alder serving quite ably on, as a vice chair. And I want to say quite ably because that was not the issue. I brought this forward because of consistency. There should not have been a, one board that could have an exception to what the precedent was. But in that discussion, it came up one item that is, should be considered. And the item was, is that the opportunity to build capacity among residents. That stood out to me. That was stronger to me than any of the reasons that I had put forward that an alder should not serve in that leadership capacity. We have expended a much time and effort to establish a community engagement department, and we are looking to build the capacity of residents to be engaged in the city process. And if we are actually doing what we say that we're going to do, it is important that we provide an opportunity for successful interaction by residents. And how that's done is that we are cultivating and training and preparing residents to serve in those capacities. Alders are elected by residents, constituents, constituents. They have already a, a very vocal part in the process of government, and to be also the chair or vice chair of any committee, I believe, can change the balance of power. I, the, the alder will talk about why this exception came into place, but that's not what I'm really talking about. I'm really talking about is, is that are we going to step forward and say that we are building, are providing the opportunity to, to build the capacity of residents to step into that role? That's why I'm not supporting this secondary amendment, and I would ask the, the committee to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Aldo Foster?
Thank you. Yeah, so I, and thank you, Aldo, for sharing your perspective on that. I think we ultimately came to some agreement around the, the benefit of getting consistency. So, what I've, you know, put forward is a different way to get to that consistency, to remove the, the difference with one of our BCCs, which is the Transportation Policy and Planning. My proposal basically goes about it in the other direction, so mine would be to remove that prohibition from, of alders serving as officers of BCCs. I, when I saw that in there, so the, the Tork Committee that created the TPPV had a pretty in-depth conversation about this issue back when they created it, and very intentionally wrote that or proposed this exception into our ordinances, which was passed by the council about four years ago. this exception into our ordinances, which was passed by the council uh, about four years ago. And the rationale that they gave at the time was that they really wanted the, the Transportation Policy and Planning Board to be a very policy-heavy body. They, they put three Alders on it and they felt like allowing Alders to participate as officers was just one more way to make sure there was good um, alder engagement in that work, in that policy development work. I have, uh, when, after I was elected and, and appointed to that board, um, I was asked to serve as the, uh, vice chair on there. I, I would say honestly, it was because nobody else really wanted to step up at the time, that someone was willing to take the chairship, but no one was, none of the residents were really eager to do that. And so I, I did agree to it and I've been serving in that capacity for the, um, the last three years. I, um, I looked, I asked actually Karen, um, from our office was able to do a little bit of research on where this ordinance came from, this prohibition. And uh, it turns out it was actually passed about eighteen years ago. Um, and I was able to get into contact with two of the original sponsors of this ordinance that created the prohibition. One was former Alder Weber and other, um, actually Alder Benford, who was on the council at the time. And they both confirmed for me that the, the rationale and the impetus for creating the prohibition in the first place was because of basically one, um, alder at the time, a little bit notorious, um, who many felt was, was abusing their position as, as chair of one of the city's, um, commissions. And so the way that that was dealt with was to create this blanket prohibition so that Alders simply couldn't be in that position. I actually have had a similar experience with the resident chair, um, before I was elected and, and have, have seen that actually a resident chair can also abuse that position largely through agenda control. So in general, um, I mean, we got a good presentation on Robert's rules. The chair actually shouldn't have any authority over the body itself. The body can overrule the chair. The body really controls everything. But because of open meeting laws and because we give the authority to set the agenda to our chairs, if the chair doesn't, you know, refuses to put something on the agenda, the body can never deal with it. And so that's basically what, um, was communicated to me and what the issue was, is that this, this alder was sort of holding process hostage by refusing to put things on the agenda that the commission actually wanted to deal with. So, um, in, in what's in front of you and in this alternate, I've really tried to address that more comprehensively by, um, allowing the, the body itself to get any item on the agenda that the body wants. So really taking that ability to hold hostage away from the chair, um, as well as increasing the frequency of elections so that if anybody feels that they're not happy with the chairship of anyone, be they resident or alder, that they're able to hold a new election and swap that out. So in general, I think this is a, a, a good positive change. I think having Alders be available to serve those roles is beneficial for our B C Cs. And at the end of the day, it's really going to come down to whether Alders are willing or not, and more importantly, uh, what the will of the, the board committee or commission is because they need to get elected in order to, to serve there. So, uh, would appreciate your support on it and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Any comments? Alder Carter?
I think we have to remember that elected officials have perceived power, whether you wield that power or not. I think that it is, um, having Alders not be chairs is a protection, not only for the alder, but it's protection for our volunteer, um, members of the B C C. As anybody who has, um, perceived uh, in the workplace, for example, a manager, a director, a supervisor, um, harassment. Maybe they don't actually have the power, but it's the perceived power that they possess. It's the same thing with us elected officials. If we say this is not a good thing, very few people other than our colleagues will come out and say it's not a good thing. We disagree. We need to, in my opinion, I, I won't be voting for this, but in my opinion, I think that that's a slippery slope, considering that we do not have the ability to, um, an A P M against elected officials. So I think it's a slippery slope. I'm not going to sit up here and say it and it will never happen again. It happened eighteen years ago. It'll never happen again because I've seen what some of our Alders have done to just our council staff. Committees, no different. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Carter. I will be very brief. So I really appreciate the intent, uh, looking into this process. So really appreciate that. I think so. There's a lot of high points here. The only thing which really, uh, makes me a little bit questionable, and this could be, might be in future could be, could be addressed is about alder role being, being chair or vice chair. So when I was, uh, before I was alder, I sit as a vice chair on Public Safety Devotee Committee. So I had quite a bit of experience sitting in various committees, Oscar, my Strategic Assessment Committee, Music Equity Committee, and many of you, uh, perhaps have the similar experience. If, as a new person, if I am sitting in the room and if, if a one person of the committee appoint an alder as a chair or vice chair, I will, might never go for a leadership role because I always perhaps, I always feel the alder have more superior knowledge because the alder came through elected process and understand the city process and perhaps I should stay quiet. This could be true for other members of the committees. They might feel, um, I won't say inferior, but might feel intimidated to really put their name forward. Or, or might be the committee members could really prefer to have, uh, alder as compared to resident. So really enhancing the leadership role, uh, for the community of colors as well as all the participants in the committees, important for them to give that role. Alders are always there to assist as a member and they can always help the chair and vice chair. That could be an option. Another thing I was thinking could be unintended consequences or perhaps a political angle would be if, if, if Alders are, while Alders are chair or vice chair, then uh, I'm not saying this mayor, but the mayor office will prefer to put more key committees, candidates, which are really aligned with the, with the mayor agenda, because they know might be that alder might, you know, if they don't have a control, resident can pull on that committee, then, uh, you know, uh, knowing alder could be a chair or vice chair. So that could be a political, uh, aspect to that as well. Uh, one thing I think so, this, this is a very interesting concept about, I don't want to close my mind completely on that about alder, vice alder, but I do think so if we go back and really look into our appointment process, uh, rather than mayor appointing, uh, committee members, perhaps council should be the one in charge. That could be debatable thing. Uh, that's part of T F O G's recommendation, if I'm not wrong. And with that, we also look into that if the chair or vice chair makes sense as an alder or not. But, but just going with the chair, uh, I, I do think so there could be a political unintended consequences as well. So that's, that's just a few thoughts I want to share, but I really appreciate, this is really interesting, uh, ordinance in front of us. Alder Wahili?
Thank you, President Abbas. I echo what Alder, um, Carter said and President Abbas. And I serve on the T F A C committee and also, uh, serve on the President War Group for, uh, social justice and terrorism and equity. And in both committee, uh, we are charged with making recommendations for the B C C. Uh, without having the recommendation of the B C C, uh, Alder Abbas talked about who makes the appointment, whether it's an alder appointment or resident appointment, then there will be a lack of balance of power. If we have transparency and if we have who's in charge of the B C C, you know, we have so many numbers of B C C of a hundred. And to have that, you know, it's easier if we can streamline the process of recruitment, retention and training for the B C C and seeing how many B C C we have in the council and what's the process in recruitment and transparency, then this is a good concept to have the alder an opportunity to serve, whether it's a vice president or co-president. And it's a good concept and I, I, I like it to have the balance because, you know, based on, you know, Alder Abbas talked about unintended consequence. When we have the staff very loyal to the mayor, then the agenda can be really directed by the staff. And that comes the conflict where the alder can intervene and say no. On the other hand, if you have a conflict with the mayor, then some of her agenda can be, or his agenda can be canceled because of political move. So I think once we have streamlined the process of B C C, having what's the process, what's the consequence, then we can be able to have this kind of conversation in term of having a vice chair or co-chair for the, uh, for the B C C. I'm not ruling out the concept. I'm not ruling out the whole thing, but I think it's something that we can discuss in the long run, once we streamline the B C C uh, from the T F A C recommendation and the President War Group for, uh, social justice and terrorism and equity. Thank you. And with that, I, I will not be voting for this, uh, alternate. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder Wahili. Alder Bennett?
So question, this might have been answered already, but, um, it seems like this came out of um, a situation Alder Foster had in which no other committee member wanted to step up as chairperson. So what would happen if someone doesn't? What happens if someone doesn't, if, if, if a committee doesn't have anyone that wants to step up as chair? Um, do they, or, or vice chair and an alder cannot serve as chair?
Attorney Haas, would you like to answer that question?
Well, uh, somebody has, yeah. Somebody has to be elected as the chair. So I don't know if that's ever occurred, but the, the committee, then I think either cannot meet or they have to eventually decide on, on a chair amongst those members who are eligible to serve as chair. Yeah, I know of one committee, you know, just recently, you know, elected a chair with the understanding that the chair would maybe serve for six months in order to get some of the newer members up to speed and then would, would eventually step down.
Alder Bennett, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. I guess what I'm thinking is what is, is it? How do I say this? Like, I don't know if you're like forcing someone to become chair when they really can't handle that responsibility, when, you know, there is an alder present that can take the chairship. So what would be the right thing to do in that situation is like to have do so or have a committee member that does not have the time to do so nor wants to do so.
Is, is that a question for me or?
Um, I don't know. It's more of a statement. But, um, I guess that, 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 that's, that's the question though, is what happens if like no one wants to be chair? Like, is it good policy for us to be forcing a, the chairship upon, um, volunteer committee members? And maybe that's a part of the process that we should think about is if we're having people on committees that cannot take on the role as chairship, then maybe we should put that part in the committee application process that someone has to take chair and they should be ready if they need to. I digress.
Thanks, Alder Bennett, uh, for the comments and question. Alder Heck?
Thank you, President Abbas. Uh, just a quick point about chairs in general. I, I, I think that, that some of the hypotheticals that we're talking about and even situations in the past are primarily a result of people misunderstanding their role as chairs of committees. Chairs really are meeting facilitators in many ways and do, and are, are not supposed to inject their opinions into agenda items and discussions unless they're granted permission to speak from the chair, really. And, um, I, I, I see the problem more as, uh, chairs, Alders or not, as not being, uh, properly trained in how to run a meeting and how to limit their input, uh, appropriately. So, um, I, I really think that if, if we have that sort of training in the future, which is something that T F O G's and others have recommended, that it doesn't really matter who is chair. So I, I'll be supporting this. Um, I, I think, um, Sherry and others made good points about, um, influence that Alders can have on committees. President Abbas mentioned it too and, and Alder Wahili. But I, I really think that, uh, a, a chair, uh, that runs a meeting appropriately will minimize uh, those sort of circumstances. So, so I'll be supporting it. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder Heck. Alder Wahili?
I, I don't know if I want to make clarification or maybe ask Alder Bennett. I think Alder Foster was the vice chair, not the chair. So the, in that regard, that particular commission had the chair, but they wanted vice chair. Is that right, if I misunderstood?
Yep. So Alder Foster just nudged his head, just translating for the public. Thank you. Alder Wahili, do you have any question or further comments? All right. I see your hand is down. Alder Bennett?
Um, I'm personally of the opinion, um, that like, I, I believe that comments made before make a lot of sense that I, I personally don't think that Alders should serve as chair or vice chair if they, um, because I think that's the power that we should allow for community members to have. How, however, um, under a, under a circumstance where there isn't um, committee members willing to take on that position, then I don't see as, um, previous comments also laid out an issue where a alder can take a chair, given that the, the position is supposed to be like neutral, I guess, on issues. So is there a way to make that clause or note that like Alders will not serve as chair unless no one else steps up to take that position?
Attorney Haas, would you like to address that? Especially the, uh, the, the question which Alder Bennett asked about the clause in which we allow public first and then alder? Is it possible?
It, it's certainly possible. It would take, you know, a motion to amend what the, what is in the alternate, the, the current language, um, you know, could be tweaked just to say, you know, that no alder can be a chair or vice chair unless there is no resident member who chooses to, uh, to, to serve in that role.
Thank you. Alder Bennett, uh, at this point, do you wish to do this amendment or Alder Foster is next in the line? Or do you want me to move on?
Um, you, um, I guess let me digest it. I'd love to see what Alder Foster has to say.
All right. Alder Foster, go ahead, please.
Thank you. It's been really great discussion. I think a lot of really good points have been made. I think many of you know I'm, I'm very interested and invested in improving the quality of our boards, committee, commission, making sure they're more effective. Um, really interested in making the common council as a body the most effective it can be. Um, so, you know, very, very much invested and interested in a lot of the points that were raised. Um I really just mostly wanted to reflect something that Alder Heck said, and it's something that I uh believe very strongly, which is. When when a chair is um doing their job appropriately. They actually have the least influence of any member of a of a board committee and commission. By ordinance, they are not supposed to participate in debate. They can ask questions of staff, but they're not supposed to give their opinions. They cannot make motions. And so if the goal is to really strengthen and highlight the voice of our resident members. It actually would probably make sense to require the chairs to be alders. So that we have to sit there quietly and help run the meeting. And turn the table over to all the residents to share their ideas. Um and so, yeah, and I I think honestly, many alders may not want to serve as chair for for that very reason. And so they, in my mind, the only reason we would actually prohibit it. Is if someone were abusing their position as chair. And and after thinking of this very, very long and very hard. I believe the only real way that a chair is going to abuse their position is through that agenda setting authority. It's by not putting something on the agenda. Once the agenda is set and the meeting is underway. They literally do not have the authority to control the meeting. Anybody that that needs to be recognized will be recognized, they can say whatever they say, anybody can move whatever they want to move. And there's really, there just is no power and authority in the position of of chair. So I I just want to put that out there because I agree with Aldo Heck, I think it's something that is really not well understood. We certainly have a long way to go to develop training and education for. Resident members, for alder members, for all of us, and we, you know, we've got a long way to go, but. You know, I don't think we're gonna be in a drastically different place. For the next couple of years, it's gonna take a long way to get to this future point, and so in the meanwhile. Honestly, you know, alders at least have the benefit and the experience of sitting through a lot of meetings and absorbing Robert's rules. You know, some of us more quickly than others. And so in terms of just how to facilitate a meeting. You know, as compared to a resident that's just got appointed and and starting to ask them to to chair a meeting without all those systems in place, without some good training and support. It just honestly feels a little unfair, and so, uh you know, again, I I think this is a common sense thing. I I don't think it's about giving alders more power at all. Um if anything, if again, it's really about how having us help get the work done. And really giving space for resident members um to to give their opinions and to make the motions. Thank you.
Thank you, Aldo Foster. Aldo McKinney?
Thank you. This is my second time speaking on this issue. Um uh it really boils down to me. Um um I appreciate again what um. Uh what has been brought forth, and I have seen of the quote of uh seemingly. Overstepping by a a resident and also by um. A a a chair, uh an alder, and so I've seen both extremes. But what what I'm really sifting down to, what is the issue? The issue is is that we have too many boards, committees and commissions. The work of T F O Gs is to really streamline and begin to look at those opportunities to. Um to um improve systems. Um and 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 one of the basic things is is that the training and preparation. Of residents to sit and hold in that position, that's lacking, that's still a lot of work to be done. Um as sitting on the T F O G's uh commission, that should be worked, that should be moving forward. I mean, that's not an infinite um committee that will be in place, you know, um. Uh forever, and so we should be working toward, and I would probably feel better if this had come. Uh and really been discussed on T F O Gs and how we are improving. The the systems of governing and how to get through that process, and I think that that. This is part of wide debate and it's very valid, but at this point. Um because if you put it in an ordinance, an ordinance is permanent, I mean, you'd have to go through the process of changing it. And I think that um there is still a great wealth in discussing this. There is great great wealth and understanding is that we are not preparing. Uh residents to be successful in the position of being chair. And you and and serving on boards, committees and commissions. I'm not saying that alders would, you know, have a leg up because one of the things that the new alder said. And that sticks in my mind is is that there was no training and preparation for that person to be. And being alder, and I could say that for myself, it's just learning it and learning and learning it. And I think that with T F O Gs and what we are trying to do to improve the system of how government works. That is where we should have this conversation. Are there trainings? Are there those things that we can put in place? And in the absence of those things, um I think that uh alder uh fosters um. Uh blanket saying that all alders uh alders can serve on any board, committee. Or commission is really premature and it really um. Uh makes me kind of nervous in terms of the balance of potential power. Thank you.
Thank you, Aldo McKinney. Before I go to Aldo Bennett, Stefan, how much time do we have?
Uh looks like we have about uh fifteen minutes here.
Ten minutes. Aldo Bennett?
Hi, so third time speaking, so I guess I'm bringing Robert's roles. Um but can I I would like to move amendment. Um that like no other person shall serve. As co as chairperson, co-chairperson, vice chairperson. Um unless no other committee member steps up to take on the role. Um I emailed Attorney Haas. And said, oh, here, I have a language that can be used. Um thank you. So it's the language stating that no alder person. Shall be chairperson, co-chairperson or vice chairperson and subunit authorized. To have more than two resident members appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the common council. Except where in an office is not filled by an alder member of the subunit. In the event the resident chair and vice chair are absent from the meeting. An alder upon consensus of the members may assume chair. However, no event shall an alder serve as chair of any such subunit for more than two consecutive meetings. So move amendment for that.
So Aldo Bennett, I'm gonna re give a try to recap this very briefly, okay?
Yes.
Uh what you were saying is this, the major change you're making is. Step where it's is not filled by a non-alder member of subcommittee, then alder can say. That's the only line you are changing in the script of Alder Foster, correct?
Yes.
Perfect. There is a motion. Can we have a second, please?
I'll second.
Uh move motion, it's seconded. Any comments on the motion or questions? Aldo Vehily? Do you have a question or comment on a motion? Uh I will move forward with Aldo Heck and come back to Aldo Vehily. Aldo Heck, please go ahead.
Thank you, President Abbas. Um I won't be supporting this amendment. Uh. I have a rhetorical question and a comment. My rhetorical question is. What happens after two meetings when an alder chairs? Then who does it if nobody will step up? It doesn't really seem to hold together. I appreciate the intent, but I I don't think it really holds together too well. Um I also think that those concerned about uh intimidating behavior by alders. Uh should not be assuaged by this amendment because. If if you really do believe that the mere presence of an alder in the room can impact resident behavior, I think they will sit back and wait. And 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 let an alder be elected chair uh and and so I I I really think that it's. It's it's not really solving any of the problems. Thank you.
Thanks, Aldo Heck. Attorney Haas, your hand is raised, so I will quickly go on you. We have eleven minutes.
Sure, just just quickly, I mean, procedurally, I think this would mean reinstating. Seven B and amending it as proposed. Um by Alder Bennett, we have a new seven B in the original motion. So we would just need to renumber that. Uh I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you. Aldo Vehily, your hand is raised. Do you wish to speak? I do not see, perhaps you are muted. Aldo Bennett, your hand is also raised.
Yes, um, oh, sorry, sorry.
Go ahead, Aldo Vehily.
No, I, the difference between uh the original uh um. Resolution or ordinance and the the amendment from Aldo Bennett, I know, you know, it's a. Unless residents want to be chair, but then there is subsequent statement of uh. Of uh. The committees or alders appointment. Uh can we have without that? Because I think the T F A G is working on streamlining the B C C and how. They are being um um appointed. So I I I'm in agreement that unless there is no resident willing to serve. But then since we're working, and I think maybe that's for T F A G. To streamline the process of appointment and also recruitment. I don't know, and this for maybe Attorney Haas, if we need that specification in there.
So Aldo Vehily, there is a motion and there's a second motion on a motion, there's amendment. Do you, the the thing you're saying, do you, Attorney Haas could clarify, do you want to do a motion on that?
Yeah, uh but I don't, I haven't seen the the. So if you, if someone can share, that would be great, and I know we don't have time.
Uh I will forward it to all of you. Uh Aldo Bennett, go ahead.
Um a clarification question for Attorney Haas. Um to refer back to the previous, to previous comments about. The section where it says however, no event shall alder serve as chair of any subunit. For more than consecutive meetings. That is language currently in the alternate, correct? That.
Uh that that's correct, so if you're looking for like a more permanent chair, you could strike that last sentence.
Okay, um, I think that's where the confusion lies in like. In the last, in the last part, um where that's asking as like. If 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 there is already a resident chair and vice chair appointed and they just happen to be. Absent from the meeting, then an alder may serve as chair. Um and that's different than an alder serving as chair, like in a more permanent position. I I think, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that for the amount.
Thank you, Aldo Bennett. We have eight minutes, so I will give one minute to each alder. Aldo Vehily, if you don't mind, if you can wrap up your comment or question in a minute, and then Aldo McKinney. Go ahead, Aldo Vehily.
Uh just go ahead, I'm I'm reading the uh, come back to me, please, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Aldo McKinney, go ahead.
My my comment is that uh we're making sausage. Um one of the previous alders, uh. And matter of fact, he was an alder in District Eight. And um one of the admonishing things is that this is what it feels like. We're trying to massage this and we're making sausage. Uh this should really go back um to T F O Gs for them, for us to wrestle with. Um and so I will not be supporting um the alternate. And I I agree, it's not really getting at and serving what these issues are, uh so I will not be supporting the alternate.
Thank you, Aldo McKinney. Aldo Vehily?
Uh I think the alternate is a little bit confusing, and I think, you know, from what I've said in the past. This is streamlining the T F A G, the B C C uh uh structure. Uh recruitment, retention and appointment without having that solid uh um structure. I think it's very uh in uh image premature to have. Uh number one, to not allow alders to be serving, but also to allow alders to be serving as a chair. So I don't wanna, I don't wanna limit not others to be serving, but also I don't wanna give the opportunity not to serve, so. I I think I'll be supporting the original version.
Thank you, Aldo Vehily. Just for reminder, in front of us is alternative as amended by Aldo Bennett. That's what we are voting on. Aldo Bennett?
Okay, now I'm gonna really sound like a butt, but um. Is because I, there is like, you know, this motive to move it to T F O Gs. Can we just motion to refer to T F O Gs? Um and I can rescind my amendment or um and just let T F O Gs.
Aldo Bennett, you can take your motion back, and if Aldo Martin can take her second back. And then you can do a motion to refer to T F O Gs.
Okay, I'll do that.
So you're taking your motion back?
Yes.
Aldo Martin, you're okay with your second to take it back?
Yes.
Yes, okay, great. Aldo Bennett, do, are you doing a motion to refer to T F O Gs now?
Yes.
Alright, is there a second?
Second.
Second, move motion, second. Is there any objection to refer to T F O Gs? Aldo Heck, I believe there's objection. Do you wish to speak?
Uh yes, I could just be recorded as a no vote if there's not a roll call.
Perfect. Any other objection beside Alder Alder Foster?
Yeah, I can't object, I have a question for Attorney Haas on this. So it's actually kind of kind of related to the.
Go ahead.
Things around the referral process that I um introduced, but. So so this was introduced, it was referred here. It was referred to T P P B and referred here and should be going back to the council. I kind of expected it to be back on Council agenda tonight, I don't think it it's not on there. With this referral and then it goes to T F O Gs, what's the process to get it back? To council because I quite honestly, I don't feel like T F O G is gonna. I mean, yeah, there are some deeper issues that this is connected to, but I don't think T F O G is gonna resolve this. Question better than C C E C and at some point it just needs to go up for a vote at common council.
Right, so I I think this committee would have to refer back to the council with the recommendation to refer to T F O Gs.
Okay, thank you.
Makes sense. Alright, Aldo Bennett, we have three minutes left. I'm gonna go for.
So can I then amend the motion or whatever to motion or refer to council with recommendation to refer to T F O Gs?
No, there's already.
Or is that what?
No, so so.
No.
Um so you already made a motion to refer to T F O Gs, if we go to T F O Gs, then it will came back. As a recommendation from T F O Gs and then C C C will recommend to common council.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So there is only one objection, uh Madeline, please note Aldo Heck object to the refer. And rest of us is yes for that. Thank you very much. With that, we have a three minute left. Could we quickly have, I will agenda item number, uh Attorney Haas? Could you please help me with that? So agenda item number six, we just need a motion to place on file, correct?
That that's the uh the motion regarding polling places.
Yes.
Yes, that will be taken care of in the redistricting ordinance.
Perfect.
Recommend placing on file.
Thank you very much. Uh could we take this agenda item number six and and refer uh agenda item number five for the next meeting? Uh Vice President Martin?
Yeah, I I can, I will make that motion. Um how about to refer any um remaining? Agenda items to our next C C E C meeting, or do you want me to just just the one?
No, just agenda item number five legislative.
Okay.
Number six, seven, three, seven, three, refer to next C C E C.
Yep, I will move that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I believe this is a unanimous consent. I don't see any hand raised. We will quickly go to agenda item number six. Legislative file number six, seven, four, zero, six. Amending section fifteen point zero two to eliminate all references to polling places location in the order to designate. Polling place location by resolution, we need a motion to place on file, please.
Move to place on file or to recommend to place on file.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Perfect, moved and seconded. Uh. Any debate questions? I don't see any hand raised, so unanimous consent, I will see as approved. Can we please have motion to adjourn?
Move adjournment.
Thank you very much. We'll see you all uh, in half an hour. Take care. Bye.